Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of January 20th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. On March 4th, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this one. As such, Councilmember Smith is participating by phone, and all votes tonight will be conducted by roll call. At this time, we have the privilege of having Bakersfield Police Chief Greg Terry to offer the invocation, and following that, Vice Mayor Ken Weir will lead us in the pledge. Would you all please stand?
Good evening. Let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you for this day. Thank you for our country and the freedoms that we enjoy. Thank you for those here who have been chosen to represent us. Please bless and guide them. Thank you for the men and women in various uniforms who are serving our community on the streets and in other capacities. I pray for protection, wisdom, humility, and compassion. Help us all to be good stewards of the resources that we have been charged to oversee. And Lord, I pray for peace and safety in our country, our community, with our families and neighbors, and we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you may be seated. Welcome to everyone tonight. It's good to see you, and thank you for engaging in the civic process. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We'd request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or lobby. Applause is allowed only during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. And please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Public statements.
Thank you. This meeting has limited public access. Therefore, public comments were encouraged to be made to the city clerk through email or by phone call. And if you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give it to the city clerk. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you are here to speak on the workshop item or hearing items 10A or 10B, we ask that you speak after staff's presentation on that matter. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Again, please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements or going over the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor Go, we've received six public speaker cards this evening with four speakers speaking on a subject of backyard hens, two speakers on separate subjects. Our first public speaker is MT Miracle.
Thank you.
MT Miracle. I would like to request that the council member Bruce Freeman reach out to me to discuss my concerns and viewpoints on the topic of backyard hens. I would like to work with him to find common ground and possible compromises to lift the temporary suspension on the past ordinance in a timely manner. The backyard hen community expects the council to represent the majority of the residents on this topic and stand behind the council's decision that approve backyard hen ownership with the safeguards and restrictions of an ordinance. Take a moment to see the volume of calls and emails that continue to come into the clerk's office in support of backyard hens. We are the identified and documented majority. We will continue to advocate for the legal protection to own backyard hens. The backyard hen community will not accept a rescinding of the ordinance due to a frivolous lawsuit from unidentified small group that has no history of environmental concern. It is obvious that this lawsuit is really about, which is control and power from people who are scared and failed at their attempt to get what they want. The waiver for SEQA is solid. It is what other cities have used with their ordinances. Chickens do not cause an adverse impact on the environment. Only a small percentage of homes will have chickens, and of that small percentage, many of them already have chickens because owning hens in Bakersfield is an accepted practice. It is time this council aligns its community practice with the ordinance by lifting the temporary suspension and allow legal protection for hen ownership. Rescinding the past ordinance is not the next step to take. The next step should be to defend the decision of the council, or while the ordinance is passed and suspended temporarily, work towards meeting the needs of the concerned group by amending the past ordinance to take into account their concerns. This is the democratic way. A few individuals with the wealth to hire an attorney should not be allowed to dictate your policy and your actions. If the unidentified group has no desire to work towards a solution, then that shows their true intentions. They are upset about the decision the council made, and they are obstructionists, a small and unidentified group of poor sports. What the backyard hen community has asked for, and the council has approved, is reasonable and safe and fair, while it enhances the quality of life experiences for families. We are the majority. We are identified. We are the ones willing to work towards a solution. We are the ones you need to represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miracle. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Merkel, could you leave your contact information with the city clerk?
Thank you. And then, Councilmember Parlier, I see a request to speak. Is that for now, or?
That is not for now.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kirk Boland.
Please introduce yourself.
Kirk Boland, Ward 4. Thank you, councilmembers. Just wanted to go over some things. At the 2012 Legislative and Litigation Committee meeting, when backyard hen ordinance was first discussed, former City Councilmember Sue Benham asked staff to research the Santa Rosa and San Diego ordinances on the effect and issues of their ordinances and to report back to the committee. I was able to contact the Deputy Director of the Development Services Department for the City of San Diego and a Senior Administrative Assistant for Code Enforcement for the City of Santa Rosa, along with four other cities, Citrus Heights, Long Beach, Murrieta, and Oxnard. All these cities I contacted responded and said they have had little to no problems with their ordinances regarding backyard hens. Also in 2012, staff conducted a survey of 10 other comparable cities in California regarding the allowance of backyard hens. Of the 10 cities they surveyed, five allowed backyard hens and five did not. Those same cities today, eight out of the 10 currently allow backyard hens. According to Realtor.com, the top 10 housing markets in 2020 all allowed backyard hens. Also according to BusinessInsider.com, the top 10 best places to live in 2020 all allowed backyard hens. After this lawsuit has been settled, the ordinance should immediately be put into place. To do otherwise would be in violation of the civil process of government. There was a vote by the city council in which four of the seven members voted to approve this ordinance. If the council bows down to the anonymous group behind the lawsuit, it will set a bad precedent for future lawsuits. The city council needs to honor that vote and those council members who sided with the majority of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boland. Next speaker, please.
Ryan Dembowski.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, Ryan Dembowski. Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Gray, welcome to the council. Councilmember Gonzalez, Councilmember Smith, thank you again for your support in the past. I'm going to start off by giving you guys the beginning of the list of cities. San Diego, Santa Rosa, Long Beach, Oxnard, Murrieta, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, La Mesa, Hanford, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Pasadena, Glendora, Ranch of Cucamonga, Monterey Park, San Marino, Sacramento, Folsom, Porterville, San Jose, Santa Maria, San Luis Obispo, Santa Fe Springs, West Covina, Roseville, Fullerton, San Clemente, Laguna Niguel, Stockton, Riverside, Templeton, Clovis, Modesto, Oceanside, and Lakeside. Those are the cities that have already legalized backyard hens in the state of California. Having a SEQA lawsuit come in front of us is kind of odd, considering that the majority of these cities in their ordinances state, whereas the city council finds pursuant to Title 14 of the California Code of Regulation, Section 15061 BC, that this ordinance is exempt from the requirements of California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as SEQA, in that the project -- I'm sorry. In that it is not a project which has the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Okay. So let's talk about that for a second. Specifically in that segment, it provides for a common sense interpretation. I gave you 35 cities in the state of California which have deemed that SEQA does not apply to an ordinance for backyard hens. I'm not even sure why we're here again. It's lovely to see you all. I appreciate you for being here. I'm sure you're sick of hearing about backyard hens, and our organization is just as sick to having to be coming in front of the council yet again over something that has been determined by precedent in the state of California that SEQA does not apply. Again, we are here because of a SEQA obstruction filed with a law firm that requires a $1,500 form by potentially one anonymous individual. The Bakersfield Urban Hens Organization has been forthright, has worked with the city, has been in front of you this whole time, and we're going to step back and let one group calling themselves the Citizens for the Preservation of R1 Zoning behind anonymous doors to determine a precedent that's already been listed by 35 cities that I provided for you. Please do the right thing. Let's get this moving forward, and let's not have to explain to children in this city how city government failed them. Four out of the seven of you approved this months ago. Let's get going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dembowski. Next speaker, please.
This is the final speaker on the backyard hens item, Michelle Harp.
Please introduce yourself, and go ahead and pull the microphone down just a little. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Michelle Harp. Welcome, the new councilmembers, and congratulations. I am in support of honoring the ordinance that was passed. I think the SEQA thing seems to be absolutely ridiculous. Out of the however many thousands of homes in Bakersfield, not every one of them is going to have backyard hens, and the people that do are going to do the responsible thing and take good care of their chickens, along with the fact that the emotional support that the chickens provide is unbelievable. I had chickens for a while, and after a horrific day at work and rushing home and getting dinner for my kids, I could go out and bed my chickens down, and all the stress of the day totally left me. So I'm in support of backyard hens.
Thank you, Ms. Harp. Next speaker, please.
Teresa Macias.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Joanne. I'm here to translate for Ms. Macias.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, miembros del consilio. Mi nombre es Teresa Macias, y estoy aquí para pedir por banquetas y luces de calle para la avenida Chalmaker y Plans Road donde yo vivo, localizada en el distrito número uno por el southwest de Bakersfield. Muchas familias de la zona tienen niños que toman el autobús para ir a la escuela. Sin embargo, para llegar a la parada del autobús tienen que caminar por las calles donde pasan carros porque no hay banquetas. Esto causa un peligro para las familias y sus niños. Pueden ver los mapas que faltan banquetas en la calle de Chalmaker. No hay banquetas para ir al mercado de la zona. Solicito junto con mis vecinos que construyan banquetas a lo largo de la avenida Chalmaker y Plans Road para que los niños puedan llegar a su destino con seguridad. Gracias por su consideración. So, in English now. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Teresa Macias, and I'm here to ask for sidewalks and streetlights for Chalmaker Avenue and Plans Road where I live, located in Ward 1 in the south of Bakersfield. Many families in the area have children who take the bus to school. However, to get to the bus stop, they have to walk on the streets where cars pass because there are no sidewalks. This causes a danger to the families and their children. You can see on the attached maps that there are no sidewalks in the street in Chalmaker. There are no sidewalks to the only market in the area. I request, along with my neighbors, that you build sidewalks along Chalmaker Avenue and Plans Road so that the children can get to their bus destination safely. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Macias, and Councilmember Arias.
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Teresa, muchas gracias por venir aquí hoy. Thank you so much for coming, and if I could have direct staff to engage with Ms. Macias so that we could have a conversation about this issue.
We will do so. Lo haremos.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Michael Haynes.
Is Mr. Haynes in the lobby? Oh.
It's Michael Harless, not Michael Hayne. I'm presenting, Get is getting ready to eliminate the night service altogether because of lack of ridership, and I presented my case last night to the Board of Directors, and it was a bad idea because people are not able to get to work. And if people are not able to get to work, they're not able to come downtown and then join themselves downtown to do what they have to do at nighttime. They're trying to eliminate where it's going to be at 7:00 at night. All buses will be in, and they're trying to eliminate the Route 84 altogether. I suggested the Route 84 to be relocated maybe in the southwest somewhere, like in the Ridgeview area, but they're going to have a Get Board meeting about it on the 16th of February, but I want to bring it to your attention because in case they want to try to eliminate the night service altogether. Also, Union Brundage needs to be repaired by the bus stop where people can get hurt. So, and if we eliminate the route, the night service altogether, then Bakersfield is basically going to shut down at 7:00 at night. That's not fair to anybody. So.
Thank you. Would you spell your last name for us, please?
H-A-R-L-E-S-S.
Thank you. And Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Harless, thank you for coming tonight and informing us. If I can ask staff to please contact Get. I think it's timely that we have a presentation. We typically have one semiannually, and I'd like to invite them to come back to present to council so we can get a better understanding of what their route changes are. And if we can get Mr. Harless's contact information, I'd like to talk to you offline.
Yeah, I already got it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, Item 6A, Council Goals Quarterly Review.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to present this item to you this evening. You have in front of you, in your packets, a far more extensive report on the status of all of the council goals and the many action items underneath those council goals that you can peruse at your leisure. Tonight, we thought we would just provide some highlights by PowerPoint to the council and for the public record, but again, you have a much thicker document with those many items in it inside your packets. In addition, there is an item there that provides that quarterly focus. We've done that for the past two quarters, and now we have a Quarter Three focus of where we're going to target our efforts as staff in the next three months, and we'll do that again for the last quarter of the year. But to go through the highlights in the PowerPoint that we have up, of course, the council adopted an updated set of council goals this summer, and we provided an update in September. Just for public record, we have, of course, our council goals, each of the eight goals and their definitions up on the screen, but now I'll start walking through some of our highlights. The Shot Spotter Expansion that was targeted for Quarter Two was completed. We have additional Shot Spotter poles up throughout the expansion area. In addition, we have hired the Chief's Adjutant, and that is a position that is focused on community engagement and community trust building. It's a new position and offers us the ability to be more proactive in reaching out to the community. Also, we started our new police academy. We graduated 14 cadets in the former academy, and we now have 39 cadets in our academy that just recently started this month. We're continuing to work really hard on lateral hires. There's some opportunities currently, and we're pursuing those. And I think it's also worth noting that the Fire Department, in their pursuit for accreditation, has completed a draft strategic plan that will receive some additional review, and then we'll share that with the city council. On Goal Number Two, around homelessness, of course, the Brundage Lee Navigation Center opened in October. We've been rapidly moving to fill beds in that location. We're close to 90 beds at this point in 90 days, and that's pretty impressive. And at the same time, we've -- the projects that the city has funded at the mission and at the homeless center have made significant progress. Two of those are complete, and the third one is nearing completion. And once that third one is complete, we'll have doubled the number of homeless beds in our county in this last year. And of course, we're continuing to have a number of funding streams that are coming from the state and deploying those funds to the best of our ability. I think it's also worth noting that we have fully staffed Second Team for the Rapid Response Teams, and they're making impacts on the homeless encampment issues. For Goal Number Three there, for fiscal sustainability, we set aside budget to create a long-range financial planning tool. It's been under development. We actually have a draft version of that for staff, and we're working through some of those details to validate the information, but then we'll be able to provide that forecast to city council, which gives a 20-year look at revenues and expenditures based on the key budgeting assumptions that we set going forward. Also, we had set aside funds in the budget intended for reserves, and at mid-year, we'll be able to look at those and see if we may be able to add a little bit to reserves than what was set aside. And then on the legislative advocacy front, we have received back our responses to our Legislative Advocate RFP, and we're nearing completion of that process, and we'll have soon for council approval, a firm that would represent us. And then we did present to the Legislative and Litigation Committee those legislative programs. I think it's probably wisdom. We're close to having our advocates on board. We may want to have them take a quick look at that final version, but we'll get that in front of the city council as well in this coming quarter. On quality of life, we have moved forward on two of the playground rehabilitation projects that were in the normal list. We actually have some park projects that were on the contingent list that after mid-year we'll probably move forward on, is my expectation, but one is complete and one is under construction. And then on the Clean City Initiative, we've had the first of our collection sites or pop-up events, but we're going to have multiple of those in different parts of the city in future months. And then our Clean City Teams, four of our Clean City Teams are currently on the streets, and two more of those teams will be on the streets very soon. For the economic perspective, largely, we've been focused on the CARES dollars, and so B-CARES program, we've already awarded more than $4.5 million, and we're looking to probably award upwards of $6 million. We were able to move funds from some other areas to make sure we got it to as many businesses as possible. And then through rental assistance, we were able to help a number of families through that program, and this is news to all councilmembers because we just heard about it today, but the city has received $11 million from the U.S. Treasury for rental assistance through the Treasury program. And we have not made all the determinations yet, but I would assume that we would follow the pattern that we have with these other rental assistance funds because there's programs in place that we can leverage and keep moving fast on that funding. And then we have worked with Bitwise on the apprenticeship program to leverage some of those CARES dollars, and just wanted to point out that we've been pushing hard on our economic opportunity areas with some outreach materials and webinars to get more participation, and we have received more applications are starting to now come in. Around infrastructure, again, many projects are in queue and in construction, but some of those that have been complete, 24th Street, significant completion there. On the TRIP program, the Bell Terrace Operational Improvements substantially complete. The Roundabout at Stockdale and Ennis is complete, and we did our groundbreaking on the Kentucky Street Urban Greening Project. It's actually a shorter-term project than some of these others, and so we've actually got some good construction already underway there and should be finished pretty soon. And then the annual curb gutter and sidewalks projects from CDBG have been well underway, and a lot of that work's happening in multiple parts of the town. For our customer service and imaging, we have a new product at the city that helps us facilitate trainings for employees that are remote and webinars, and so we've offered numerous trainings through that related to this topic. And then one of the goals actually underneath this is that we are better represented in state and national associations, and Chris Hewat, our Assistant City Manager, was appointed to a league committee, and Chief Gallego is actually vice chair for the Cal Cities Department for our fire personnel, and will end up becoming president there. And then also, worth pointing out that Visit Bakersfield has had a number of their materials updated in this last quarter. And then on downtown and urban revitalization, the downtown sewer study was completed this last quarter. That'll actually come to this council at your next meeting for a workshop because there are a few important points to share for the long-range planning aspects of downtown sewer study. The good news is that we actually have current capacity available, but long-term capacity we'll have to plan ahead for. We're also underway with our downtown corridor enhancement study or those streetscape design study. We renewed the contract with the homeless center for our downtown ambassadors, and then we were able to leverage some CARES dollars to move forward the downtown banner program that was slated for later this year, but we were able to leverage those CARES dollars to take care of that and then can leverage those city funds that were set aside to continue to maintain that program in an efficient way. So again, there are many other updates. The focus is there for Quarter Three, but we wanted to just provide some of those highlights today. We'll continue to do these quarterly updates. One of the things that will be delivered in this third quarter is an online dashboard that has We renewed the contract with the Homeless Center for our Downtown ambassadors. And then we were able to leverage some CARES dollars to move forward the Downtown Banner Program that was slated for later this year. But we were able to leverage those CARES dollars to take care of that and then can leverage those funds, city funds that were set aside, to continue to maintain that program in an efficient way. So again, there are many other updates. The focus is there for quarter three, but we wanted to just provide some of those highlights today. We'll continue to do these quarterly updates. One of the things that will be delivered in this third quarter is an online dashboard that has all of these council goals on the web with regular updates to them. And that's an exciting piece there. And then we'll continue to provide other updates through general info and other media as well. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions or follow-ups on what was shared today.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Colleagues, Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. So Christian, when we talk about the clean teams, Rapid Response, just to get an idea of the totality of the areas that they're going to cover within the city, I'd like maybe March, come back with a workshop or some sort of forum and talk about the areas, zones, how they're going to break down complaints and respond to those, and proactivity of these clean teams, too. You know, I don't want necessarily, you know, one team on the right of the city and one on the left, and the left one's going to the right and back and forth. So I just want an idea of how that responsibility is going to be broken up.
Would love to do that. In fact, we're preparing some marketing and education materials about what services are available, and we'll make those available to the broader public. But it would be a great opportunity to walk through those in a public forum and share those with the council and with the community through that forum. And part of the Clean City Initiative is not just to have the cleanup crews, but to also do some education and help the community appreciate the importance of taking advantages of the services to dispose of items the proper way. And we want to facilitate that as opposed to having to address illegal dumping and other things. And so it is a multi-pronged approach, a great opportunity to come back in March and outline the different elements of that approach. And I think there will be some discussion about that even at mid-year in the February timeframe. I think a few more resources around Clean City and homelessness are warranted, given the number of issues that we're facing, and we'll have some proposals around that likely at mid-year.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Anything further, Councilmember Parlier? Councilmember Freeman?
Christian, I had a, excuse me, couple of areas I wanted to ask some questions about. First was, can you tell me when we will have the projection we've been talking about for a couple of years that will show the pension obligation over, it's sort of, it might be a 15-year graph, but its growth and decrease between, and also, you know, divided into Classic and the New Members. So we have an idea of what we're facing as we move forward and when the curve supposedly starts to come back down, which would be if Classic Members retired. We still don't, I guess it's hard to work on, but we're going to need something fairly soon just to start getting a handle on it.
Yeah, happy to report that that's part of our long-range financial planning tool, and that's almost done. We'll have a 20-year forecast of what our revenues and expenditures will look like, including those CalPERS impacts, within the next couple of months. For mid-year, in mid-February, we'll have at least a static graph that will show that. So we'll have that for mid-year. This tool is actually a living tool where you can change some of the assumptions within it, and it'll change how the projections are. If you say we want to add 10 positions, what will that do to our budget 15 years from now? That living part of it probably is more like two months out because we've got some validating to do, as I mentioned. But having that graph on CalPERS, we'll have that for you at mid-year, and some updates on what CalPERS is telling us about, you know, their actuarials.
Okay. Another request that has been made each year and even by the Oversight Committee, that we would, at some point before too long, see an inventory of our assets and the depreciation or useful life schedules that show us, hey, this tractor is 40 years. We've got to set aside, you know, 1/40th each year so we know how much money we have to put in our capital budgets. It's just a tool that every company in the world has, and we haven't ever somehow been able to get it. And we will, we will get beat up if we do this again by turnip seed and the rest of them, if, for the third year in a row, we can't produce that schedule when we do our budget. So I'd like to get some focus on that. My last comment is regarding Goal 7, the Promoting Customer Service Image Pride. The main objective of this goal originally was that we would have our staff be trained so that they, in customer service. The idea was that that's part of our image and our branding and our long-term economic success is we want to be known as the most business-friendly city in California. Well, the reputation of our staff will be a big part of that because people in other cities talk about it a lot, and it helps us recruit businesses when we have a reputation. Yeah, you go up there, those people are really customer service-oriented. They want to help you. They want to help the businesses. And so that's just, usually that takes a lot of training. And it's a big organization, and it means all the way from the guy working on the rec crew cleaning, trimming the bushes, to the head of, you know, planning and development. So just a culture. And I'm not saying we're not doing a good job, I'm saying, but we want to be the best, and that takes a real emphasis so that our reputation spreads, and that does pay off in businesses coming here.
Yeah, and I would reflect on that, Councilmember. I agree, and I've heard that clearly, that we want that to be part of our culture. And we've done, through this Target Solutions, as I mentioned, a number of trainings on customer service, but it hasn't been that deep culture training. And part of my assessment is, you know, through this pandemic timeframe, I didn't want to bring forward a recommendation to, because I think it's probably even worth spending some dollars to bring in, you know, some outside assistance and help train on these principles. But I respectfully have thought that, you know, post-pandemic is probably a good time to make that a big push as we've been stretched a little bit thin. But absolutely hear that, and it's part of our work plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Christian, could you kind of highlight maybe a little bit better what's going on in economic opportunity areas? Because I don't know that it's very well-known, and I know it's been around for a while, and now it's got funding, so we need people to take advantage of that.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to say more about it. The Economic Opportunity Areas are seven zones. They're largely within the areas of the city that are fairly consistent with our CDBG areas, so those are lower-income areas or disadvantaged neighborhoods. But within these zones, businesses can apply for grants, and these are actually not loans. These are grants that don't have to be paid back. If a business can demonstrate that it's going to help retain that business, expand that business, or sort of change their assessed valuation of that property, then they can access these funds to make capital improvements to their businesses. The reason for that last element of the assessed valuation is because the theory is, as these capital improvements are made, then that generates, you know, or stimulates more development and, you know, impacts the tax base. But again, these are loans to businesses that can help improve their own operations and help them expand or even just become more efficient. And they can be applied for through the city's Economic Development Department. We have an application form that's on our website. We have received a number of applications in Ward 2, and we're now starting to get some in Ward 1 as we've done some more outreach there. And actually, the city recorded a webinar on this topic that individuals can go to our website and see a little bit more information about what these economic opportunity areas are, what would be eligible expenses, and the amounts that folks can apply for.
Okay. Thank you for that. So we need to get the word out, though. And we want people utilizing this. So is it something, do we put something up on Facebook, the city's Facebook page or Economic Development page, or how do we get it out there?
Well, I think we can do more. We have done each of those things that you've mentioned. We've done social media postings. We've done press releases. We've also put it on the city's website. I think, and not to overstep, but perhaps Councilmember Gonzalez could share some feedback because he's been very proactive. I think sometimes some of these direct invitations have been those that have resulted in the most applications. But we do have economic development staff that are available to meet with, for example, a business association or a collection of businesses that may, you know, be around a specific business district. And we can do some of those outreaches to specific groups. We've done that with downtown folks. We've done that with, as I mentioned, this webinar that we did. And so I think some of the traditional methods have been used, and to your point, it's accurate. We haven't had as much business, and so we're looking for even more ideas and connections that we can go and do this proactive outreach to businesses with our staff from the Economic Development Department.
Okay, well, maybe sometime in the near future, you and I can talk a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to comment and say, great job to our city staff. I mean, we need to put all of this into context in that we've all been dealing with the global pandemic for the last year. We've been dealing with how to utilize, you know, a significant amount of CARES funding and other funding that have, that has been directed to the city over the last few months and not only dealing with the pandemic personally, but also responding as a city. And to still push forward on all of these goals is just tremendous, and I'm very proud of our progress. And I just want to give you kudos, Mr. Clegg, and the whole team throughout the city of Bakersfield. Thank you so much for your hard work. We still have a lot more to do, but still, we should celebrate all the great progress. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. To layer in on top of what Bruce's statements were on customer service, Councilman Rivera at some time ago made a referral regarding Lean Six Sigma. I don't know if that'd be a perfect platform or not for us, but you mentioned some other potential operators, contractors. So if you could bring back that one, maybe a few others, and have a discussion about what tools they provide. Thank you.
I don't see any more requests to speak. Vice Mayor?
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion? Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appointments Number 7A, Appointments to the City Council Committees and Other Special Committees and Boards by Vice Mayor Weir for 2021 to 2023.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I believe each council member has the proposed committee assignments. I have not heard anybody yelling at me or clogging up my phone, so knowing that, I would move approval of the appointments.
Thank you. You have a motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved. Thank you. Before we move on to the next item, Madam Clerk, did you distribute the forms for people who wish to recuse or pull an item? I don't see those up here. Oh, okay. Go ahead. Vice Mayor or Madam Clerk, go ahead and announce the next item.
Consent Calendar Items 8A through A to U for Approval.
I'm sorry, I need to recuse myself. This is Councilmember Smith.
From which item, Councilmember?
8C.
8C?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
We need a reason, Councilmember Smith.
Financial interest in downtown development property.
Okay. Does any council member wish to pull an item for separate consideration? Councilmember Gonzalez has submitted 8C and 8M.
That's right, Vice Mayor, thank you.
I also want to pull 8Q. Any other council member have a conflict or wish to recuse themselves? Seeing none, I make a motion to approve item 8A through, what's the last item?
E.
Oh.
U.
U.
Through 8U. With the exception of the items pulled for separate consideration.
Which are 8C, 8M, and 8Q.
Yes.
Correct. You have a motion? Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Thank you. And now Councilmember Gonzalez for 8C.
Thank you, Mayor. 8C is regarding the downtown parking requirements. I made this referral several months ago in order for us to promote our goal of doubling the population of downtown Bakersfield, and by creating incentives and parking reductions, the idea is that we'll be able to promote future development. I appreciate all the work that Planning and Development has done and Plan Commission, but still felt as though this particular draft does not meet the, quite meet the goal of my initial referral, especially considering some of the parking studies we've conducted. The parking study we conducted in 2017, and the comparative analysis when looking at Fresno and their 50% reduction. So I've had a conversation with Mr. Clegg just this evening, and if I may characterize our conversation, I think we came to some agreement. If we looked at the ordinance and revised Section B 3 that reads, "Development at a density of 50 dwelling units per net acre and above, only one parking space per unit is required regardless of the number of bedrooms," if we strike that density requirement and just allow for only one parking space per unit, I think that would satisfy me and, from what I understand, Mr. Clegg, that would work for staff as well.
Yes, Councilmember, that's correct.
So if I can make a motion with that amendment, I'd like to do so.
Thank you. Colleagues, any requests? Vice Mayor?
Yes, I can restate it. So under, within this ordinance, under Section B, it's regarding multiple family residential development parking incentives. So it says, "For exclusively multiple family residential development projects, the following incentives shall apply. On-site guest parking shall not be required. Tandem parking will be permitted for each unit containing two or more bedrooms." And number three, "Development at a density of 50 dwelling units per net acre and above, only one parking space per unit is required regardless of the number of bedrooms." the number of bedrooms." And so I am amending that to strike the section that states, "Development at a density of 50 dwelling units per net acre."
Okay. There's a section in there that you're willing, you just want to strike it out?
Correct.
Has it got an item number or something?
It is B 3. Section 3B 3.
On item 8C.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman?
I want to express some support for that motion because the objective is to incentivize people to develop in our downtown. We do have goals of more walkability, less traffic. This just follows suit with what every major city in the United States is already doing. It's a special zone. I wouldn't necessarily recommend this for out in my ward, but I think in downtown, we want to encourage development, and we want walkability, and we don't want as much traffic. I think this is a good recommendation. So I just want to say that's, you know, it's really saying you have to have at least one parking place. But many cities are now not allowing to build any parking at all with a new apartment building. They're trying to get traffic out of, all over, especially all over the United States and all over Europe, too. They don't want any more traffic in those downtowns. So I think we're not going that far. But I think our city has, gets plagued with too much traffic. And I think it's just a good idea. Doesn't mean a developer has to build only one. If they feel the market's going to require that they do a parking space for each bedroom, they're going to go ahead and do it anyway. This is just setting the minimum threshold. So I'm supportive of the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. I don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith? Oh, he abstained. Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Smith abstaining.
Thank you. And now 8M, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Here we are presented with a few proposals tonight to allocate over $2.00, almost $2.3 million in community development block grant funds. I appreciate the speed at which staff has worked to allocate these dollars. I know these are additional dollars from our annual CDVG allocations. But I just feel that in future allocations, especially this large of an allocation, that it ought to go to the Budget and Finance Committee prior to coming to council. Typically, Budget and Finance Committee for the public's benefit has really been the committee that takes a harder look at allocations for community development block grant funds. And I think that in hindsight, I think it would have been better for us to first take this to Budget and Finance. I realize that I didn't bring this up earlier, and it is my fault. But I just wanted to make a note that in future, if staff can please take this to Budget and Finance first. Thank you. And with that, I make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. And Mr. Clegg, you and I talked about the focus on performance outcomes when we approve these types of grants rather than just input. But as we move forward with any kind of grant or funding, that we really look at performance outcomes on an ongoing basis. You have a motion, Madam Clerk? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Weir?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And now 8Q, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. About 18 to 20 months ago, I made a referral to Budget and Finance. And the referral was to talk about recycling and the use of individuals and businesses to assist us with the recycling. And unfortunately, we got the cart before the horse because apparently we've been doing a pilot program that is to evaluate the processes and the costs. But we should have gone to Budget and Finance first because that's where we decide. We have discussions, we have visitors, we have really sometimes robust discussions about how things are allocated and what we should do. And that's how this should have gone, and that's exactly why I made that referral. So, Madam City Attorney, I may need a little help with this motion because originally I was going to table this until we'd been through Budget and Finance, and we'd had a chance to analyze and come with a recommendation to bring it back to the council. However, there is a possibility that this particular item will not come back to the council. So should I just make a motion to deny this item in case it doesn't come back? Or what is your recommendation?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think whatever you feel comfortable with, I either refer it to Budget and Finance, and then Budget and Finance can have that robust discussion as you have indicated. And if it comes out of committee, so be it. And if it doesn't, that'll be noted on a future agenda. I think, though, if you're going to deny it, you should probably refer the topic to Budget and Finance either way. So my recommendation to you would be to pull this matter.
Okay.
And have the discussion occur in Budget and Finance as soon as possible.
That is my motion.
Thank you. I don't see any requests to speak. You have a motion, Madam Clerk? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. We're about to move now into our hearings, colleagues. Does anybody need a break at this point? Yes. So let's take five minutes, and we'll be back. 6:18, and we're starting again. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side. So it's important that you identify yourself and make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up, and please quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your public statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk. She'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit per side. So please be concise and avoid repeating remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the first public hearing item.
Item 10A, Public Hearing to Consider a Resolution Ordering the Vacation of the North 19.46 Feet by 82.50 Feet of R Street, located 302.25 Feet North of California Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'd like to ask Paul Johnson to come forward. Oh, excuse me. I'm on the next item, Mr. Nick Fiddler. My apologies.
Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Public Works Division received a request from the Development Services Division to vacate a portion of R Street to install some fencing for the Mill Creek Housing Project. There was no requests to deny this, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. And so at this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? And if so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. So this is in opposition to staff's recommendation. Seeing none, now is there anyone who wishes to speak in support, in favor of staff's recommendation? Please speak to the microphone. Please step to the microphone and identify yourself, and go ahead. No one wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will now close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Gonzalez, this is in your word.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the resolution.
Thank you. You have a motion, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Weir?
Aye.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Sorry, Councilmember Smith, can you please repeat your vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier?
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next, public hearing item.
Public hearing item 10B, Public Hearing to Consider Conditional Use Permit Number 20-0179, Appeal, Casa Esperanza Transitional Home for Women and Children.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and honorable members of the council. This item now will be spoken to by our planning director, Paul Johnson.
I could have gave that last presentation. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Paul Johnson, planning director, if I could get the slideshow presentation.
Mr. Johnson, before we begin, Councilmember Gonzalez would like to make an announcement. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Andre Gonzalez will abstain from the following agenda item due to a perceived conflict of interest, as I once served on the advisory council for Casa Esperanza. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. This item is an appeal to a conditional use permit that allowed a rooming house for the Casa Esperanza Transitional Home for Women and Children. So the site is located at the corner of Panorama Drive and Haley Street. For reference, the development you see to the east is Bakersfield College. The property is just over a half acre, contains a 3,600-square-foot residence along with some of the common amenities. It also includes seven bedrooms, an office, a playroom, and there's sufficient parking for nine vehicles on site. So a rooming house, what is a rooming house? The municipal code defines a rooming house as a building containing three or more guest rooms occupied by three or more individuals for compensation by the month or greater term. The Planning Commission considered this item on November 5. There were three individuals that spoke on behalf of Casa Esperanza noting that the rooming house will accommodate six homeless women and their minor children. The purpose is to provide economic stability, to allow for a transition of clients to more permanent housing. Clients must contribute 20% of the income to the home each month. Visitation hours are 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily by appointment only. There is a curfew of 10:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and midnight on Friday and Saturday. Smoking, drugs, alcohol are prohibited on the premises, and there is an onsite employee 24 hours a day. There were also eight neighbors that spoke in opposition, and I would like to acknowledge that Jason, owner, who is the appellant, she really came together for the voice of the community, and there was a lot of reduction in repetitive comments, so I appreciate her. But she noted that after two community meetings, there were still unresolved issues. Some of the other concerns related to the Planning Commission is there was no limit on the amount of children in the home, there was no onsite security, there was insufficient parking, there was concerns with the safety of children, and that was with the traffic on Panorama Drive and the distance to the elementary schools, and that this facility would also compound the excessive vandalism that already occurs in the neighborhood. An appeal was filed in a timely manner, which is why we're in front of your council. The appeal justification was an implicit bias in conflicts of interest on several of the commissioners, that Casa Esperanza exempted themselves from being legally responsible for accidents and damages that occur in the neighborhood. The rooming house would cause an undue burden on the community. There was no limit on the amount of children in the home, and again, no onsite security. Going back to a conditional use permit, there are two findings for approval that must be made. The first is that the use is deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. And the second finding that must be made is that the use is in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan. A conditional use permit, if approved, is subject to conditions to ensure compliance with zoning regulations, elements and objectives of the general plan, policies of the city, and conditions to protect the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare. So several options for your council tonight. You could uphold the appeal, in which case the conditional use permit would be denied. You could deny the appeal, in which case the conditional use permit would be approved with conditions. And those conditions can be that of the Planning Commission or any amendment to those conditions as deemed necessary by your council. If additional time is needed to answer questions or obtain information to make an informed decision, you could continue this hearing to a date certain. At this time, staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the conditional use permit. This completes staff's presentation and available if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? If so, please step to the microphone and identify yourself and proceed.
Mayor, I just would like to announce that staff received a transmemorandum regarding this item, transmitting correspondence, and additional materials.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Good evening. My name is Kristin Yerketis. Before I start, I was wondering if we could possibly have 18 minutes for this portion.
We typically allow 15, and we'd ask you, I think, to state of that, please.
Okay. My name is Kristin Yerketis, and I live at 1411 Panorama Drive, which is directly next door to the property where this project is being proposed. Myself and another neighbor will be speaking on behalf of our Panorama area neighborhood tonight. We have over 100 signatures from residents in the neighborhood directly adjacent to this property who are opposed to the plan that Casa Esperanza has submitted. Casa Esperanza has not produced very much support for this project from our neighborhood. Out of all of the form letters that they collected, only three were from our 93305 ZIP code. One from the current homeowner selling her house, another from someone at the homeless center, and a third from a resident over 10 blocks away. We do not oppose helping homeless women and their children transitioning out of homelessness. Rather, we oppose the plan that is presented to you today that requires a conditional use permit in order to operate. From our vantage point and knowing this neighborhood, we find several major flaws and deficiencies in Casa Esperanza's plans. After extensive research into this plan and others like it, we do not feel that the plans for this project are transparent, as the board members have countered much of our concerns with answers along the lines of, oh, don't worry, it'll be fine. The information we do have lends us to believe that it is not a sustainable plan with a reasonable scope and size for a single-family neighborhood. In our minds, a poorly executed plan will help no one. First, many of our concerns relate to the fact that Casa Esperanza wants to fill this single-family home with too many people. They're proposing that six families live in this single-family They're proposing that six families live in this single-family home with only one live-in residential assistant. Figure one of the Bakersfield Kern Regional Homeless Collaborative 2020 Pick Count Report shows that there is a 1:2 ratio of adults with children, I have the graphic up here of that table, and children who were sheltered in Bakersfield during the count. Thus, it is a logical assumption that one woman who would reside in the home would have an average of two dependent children. Hence, we estimate that Casa Esperanza will likely operate with six women and 12 or more children, along with the one residential assistant, bringing the occupancy of the home to 19 or more. The application never gives a maximum number of occupants who can live there. I have reviewed prior CUP applications for rooming houses in Bakersfield and found language echoing the Uniform Housing Code that outlines the number of occupants that are legally allowed per bedroom. Based on the provided floor plan, this will put the maximum occupancy for sleeping at 22. This is far above what the average occupancy is in a single-family home, even multi-generational homes, and is a completely unrealistic jump from the R1-approved zoning for this neighborhood. When we asked the Casa Esperanza board members if the project could operate with fewer than six women, we were told that that was not possible. Please do not ignore the actual logistics of what it would take to make this plan work with family dinners for 22 people every night, multiple families sharing small bathrooms, and multiple ages of dependent children living under one roof. This floor plan is not usable for 20-plus people to live in safely. Second, I am not convinced that this project even qualifies for a CUP when there is no specific wording in Casa Esperanza's operating statement or anywhere in the CUP application that the women and children that will live here are required to be living in Bakersfield before residing at Casa Esperanza. Jim Mosher, Board's Secretary, confirmed this in a Bakersfield Californian article. Mosher acknowledged that there is no explicit barring of women and their children from outside of Bakersfield. What is to prevent them from serving as an overflow facility for other transitional homes they are partnering with, like the Alexandria House in LA? This does not serve the city of Bakersfield as essential or desirable for the public convenience and welfare, as is required for a CUP, if their residents are not coming from our own city. There is no list of agencies or shelters that they have established partnerships with in order to get referrals for potential residents anywhere in their plan or on their website. Vague wording is not sufficient or acceptable. We implore the council to require Casa Esperanza to explicitly state that their target audience is to serve those who live in the city of Bakersfield. Third, when I coordinated two meetings between neighbors and Casa Esperanza board members, they gave us the name of transitional homes that they had studied and planned to model their startup project after. However, there are several significant differences between what they are proposing and how their successful models run. The Alexandria House is the main model transitional home that Casa Esperanza have referenced in their literature and advertising and is located in Los Angeles in a multiple-family residential zoned area. And I have the zoning for that property up here, as well as pictures of the home in LA. In a Google Map snapshot of the property, I counted no less than 12 vehicles parked in the driveways and immediately adjacent to the property. I reached out and had a conversation with Michelle Ton, the executive director of the Alexandria House. She stated that they have 16 employees working normal business hours during the weekdays, along with relying heavily on additional volunteers in order to operate smoothly. On the weekends, they have a minimum of three employees. They have a daycare and after-school program that is open not only to residents but also the community. She said they have nine families, which is about 30 to 35 people, and many of the residents are former victims of domestic violence or similar or human trafficking. They provide onsite counseling services, and she stressed that this component was vital to the success of the program. Casa Esperanza has deviated substantially from the Alexandria House model and the oversight of operations. The woman who started the Alexandria House, Judy Vaughn, lives in the home with these women. She is able to develop rapport and deep connections with the residents because she is physically present. We asked Casa Esperanza board members if any of them would be living in the house, and were told no. The plan for this project calls for only three staff members, only one of which is living on-site and available after business hours and on the weekend. As a high school science teacher, I have firsthand experience that managing a large group of people successfully with different backgrounds, needs, and expectations is not something that a person masters overnight, especially when they have experienced trauma, fear, and loss. In a given week, the one residential assistant will be solely in charge of the house for 128 hours. When asked what the call of vacations would be in this person, they did not have a clear answer. We assume it would be most likely a young person who is obviously interested in helping their community but will likely lack the skills and knowledge required to maintain peace, order, and ensure all posted rules are followed by residents at all times. This is unacceptable that any issues that arise from this project will not have the appropriate supervision and insight with which to manage them. This person will likely be responsible for taking care of household duties, managing and delegating household chores, running weekly household meetings, managing nightly family dinners, acting as security personnel, monitoring all residents and visitors coming and going, monitoring that all residents are adhering to rules, and mediating any interpersonal conflicts between residents. Michelle Ton acknowledged that occasionally there are issues between some women, and she did stress that it was not often, but that it was of the utmost importance that the issue was addressed swiftly. Because Casa Esperanza has not planned for any security personnel, neighbors will have to call for public assistance by way of police, fire, or EMT when issues come up that are not resolved by the staff. A multi-generational home knows with some degree of certainty that all family members are likely to be able to cohabitate with each other. When you throw six families together who don't know one another, there will be no guarantee that they will be able to cohabitate peacefully. There will be no guarantee that any invited or uninvited guests will follow the rules either. Again, we ask you to think about the logistics of this proposal. Elevator pitches and plans look fine on paper, but implementation is another story. Next, I would like to point out a very apparent discrepancy in the cost of this project and the amount of funds available to the organization. In the fiscal year ending in June 2018, the Alexandria House spent over $951,000 on expenses to operate their transitional home for nine families and brought in $16,266 in revenue, with the difference coming from fundraising. Michelle Ton stated that their biggest line item expense is staff, which includes salaries, workers' comp, and healthcare. If we estimate the cost that might be incurred, Casa Esperanza should budget about $600,000 per year to operate in a similar manner as the Alexandria House. Casa Esperanza has been fundraising for the past five years, which is a great start. But with the cost of purchasing the home in cash and funding the remodel, there just won't be enough in the bank to set aside operation costs for at least the first one, two, much less three years. A balance sheet provided to us on January 7th shows that Casa Esperanza currently has A planning commissioner asked at the November 5th hearing if any financials had been submitted to the city, to which they replied that they had not. As of this hearing, no financials have been submitted as part of this application. The transparency of this project is lacking in so many ways. I don't doubt that they have been fundraising hard for the past five years, but documentation should be provided with proposed budgets to reassure all involved that this project is feasible at this time. The purchase price of the home has not been disclosed, but Casa Esperanza board members have stated they intend to put in about $100,000 towards the remodel, which is completely unrealistic, as myself and fellow neighbors who have completed a variety of home remodel projects in these 1950s homes can attest, and will certainly not be enough to cover the entire landscaping, in the front and backyards, interior updates, as well as costs incurred to apply for permits, and bring up to code the two-car garage, storage room, five rooms, one bathroom, and laundry room that are in unpermitted areas of the house. While I did not live in the neighborhood, when this illegal construction took place, my fellow neighbors have told me that they were put in through two separate garage conversions. According to the conditions listed on the CUP report from the planning department, the two former driveways will need to be removed, gutter cutaways replaced, and sidewalks installed along Haley and Panorama. Casa Esperanza will also be required to pave the rear parking lot of nine stalls with concrete, asphaltic concrete, or other paved street-surfacing material in accordance with the Bakersfield Municipal Code. We got an estimate for both of these projects from a major local construction company, and it came out to over $103,000 for just those two projects. These two required components already take up what Casa Esperanza is telling us their budgeting for all of the home improvements. Once again, their plans sound great, but the logistics and planning are simply not there yet. When one considers the operating expenses, which will be comprised of salaries, food for upwards of 20 people, supplies, utilities, insurance, home maintenance costs, and possibly property taxes, that amount is just not there yet, and major funding will need to be secured in order to start operating. If work on the home drags out because of financial strains and the home is left uninhabited, the chances of vandalism, theft, and squatters will be substantial. Finally, we challenge the validity of the exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act provisions listed in the staff report. I would like to submit this letter, which you were provided a copy of earlier, which has also been submitted electronically to the city clerk that outlines the invalid exemption that this project was labeled with, to excuse it from CEQA provisions. When determining if a project falls within a specific class of categorical exemption, courts generally look to the list of examples listed under CEQA guidelines and reject the use of the exemption when the activity is not similar to the listed examples. This project is not exempt from CEQA as a Class III project. The project does not fall within the examples provided at CEQA Guidelines 15303. According to the staff report, the proposed rooming house will accommodate six residents and their minor children, and one onsite resident assistant in the R1 district. A rooming house is more akin to a multifamily dwelling than a single-family residence. However, the example provided at CEQA Guidelines 15303B is also not applicable because it is limited to multifamily residential structures totaling no more than four dwelling units. A rooming house that will accommodate six residents, minor children, and a staff member certainly exceeds the four dwelling unit threshold provided by the example in the guidelines. A change in use from a single-family use to a multifamily use of this size simply does not qualify as a Class III exemption. At a minimum, this project should be sent back to planning staff and the city attorneys for review of CEQA guidelines. However, I feel that we have given the council enough reasonable doubt that the plans for this project are also not ready for implementation by the Casa Esperanza organization. We understand their mission and get what they are trying to do, but there are too many unfilled holes in their very ambitious plan, and they have been unwilling to compromise in any way on it. Therefore, we have no choice but to ask that the city council find that this application is too large in scope and size to be feasible and seamless addition to this neighborhood, and suggest that Casa Esperanza go back to the drawing board in order to draft a more reasonable and realistic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yerketis. And you stayed right within your time. We have about 55 seconds left. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition?
My name is Scott Hare. I live at 1201 Panorama Drive, and I think Kristin just did a great job of exhibiting the reason that we're concerned about this project. Casa Esperanza has presented to us what seems to be a back-of-the-napkin type of approach to this project. We have asked repeatedly for income statements, for projected budgets for years one, three, five, and we have also asked for potential development plans so that we've got an idea if they're going to be able to work within the budget that they've created. And all along, we've received no comments back. I will say that Julie, the director of Casa Esperanza, was very open to me on the phone. I appreciate that conversation that we had, and she did get us a balance sheet. So with that thought in mind, we ask that you consider our statement and deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. And so we are now out of time for those who wish to speak in opposition. And now, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support, in favor of staff's recommendation? Please step forward. And while you're doing that, how many people wish to speak in support? Two of you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, councilmembers, council, city manager, and Madam Clerk. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Jim Mosher, spelled M-O-S-H-E-R. I am the secretary of Casa Esperanza, and I'll be followed up by Julie Caesar, who is our chair. Madam Clerk, I can't see the time left. I don't know if that's workable, but, well, okay, that's fine. I'm here to speak in support of Casa Esperanza. It is the right project. It is the right location. This is a land use matter, and it is the right time. If you could advance to the next slide, please. We're asking you to deny the appeal, to uphold the approval, the unanimous approval of Planning Commission from November 5, and to find that 1421 Panorama is the ideal location. It's not perfect, but it's ideal. And the reason is its transportation connected with B.C., Bakersfield College right across the street, and the bus hub there with six bus lines, routes that go all the way across town to Cal State. It has access to school, childcare, work opportunities, educational opportunities for the women. It's a large quarter lot. It's got nine interior parking spaces that planning staff has pointed out are screened from view behind a block wall. It's also been found to enhance the character of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. A little bit about what Casa Esperanza is and it is not. We are a home, a transitional home, coupled with a structured program, with strict rules. It's a hand-up versus a hand-out. It really takes something for a mother with children to want to be there and to lean into the program and agree to all of the rules. Violation of the rules is reason to be terminated from the program. It's an opportunity to break the cycle of homelessness one family at a time. What it's not, it's not an emergency shelter, it's not a drug and alcohol rehab program, it's not a safe house for women actively fleeing domestic violence, it's not a group home or a residential care facility or a long-term care facility for people with disabilities. We are committed to being a great neighbor. We're going to invest well over six figures in upgrading the property. It will be professionally maintained. We've talked to three other transitional homes in the state, one in the Bay Area and one on the coast, in Alexandria House that was mentioned by the appellant, and they all have had no problems with neighbors. And we believe we will not have problems with neighbors either. It all exists in communication. With communication, things can be headed off at the pass, or at least brought to the surface, and they can be addressed in a timely manner. After the Planning Commission hearing and the approval of the CUP, we knocked on 98 doors and received an additional 13 letters of support in the 93305 adjacent neighborhood. Next slide, please. This project is wholly consistent with this council's goal number two, which is to address homelessness. And one of the avenues or pathways is to provide increased transitional housing. This home will provide 18 to 20 beds, and that will free up capacity in other facilities in Bakersfield. It's also consistent with goal number eight in that we're installing sidewalks and ADA compliant ramps along Haley and Panorama. There's existing crosswalk, but it's not connected to any sidewalks. Next slide, please. I want to emphasize the proximity to the Get Bus Hub, the transit center, which is a mere 1,500 feet, less than a five-minute walk across the street. This is really important for women, especially with small children and strollers, to get to the bus if that's their mode of transportation. We believe it will be. Most of the women who come to us are homeless, will probably not have transportation. If they do, we have nine paved parking spaces in the backyard for that purpose, but if they have cars, all the better. I also want to say that empowerment is key in having these women take care of their own transportation needs to the degree they can with the public transit. That's a critical part of them inventing a new narrative for their lives. We did look at other properties around Bakersfield, and all of them were either too small, and they certainly were not transportation-connected like this property is. Next slide, please. And that's just the Bakersfield Get Bus system map, showing that it connects to all four transit centers across the city. Next slide, please. We are blessed to have Mr. Dave Packer on our board and heading up the renovation and improvements. It's going to be done right. As I mentioned, some of the amenities we have, and the appellant mentioned removing driveway aprons along Haley to make it safer. The front yard is going to have shade trees, drought-tolerant, low-water-use landscaping. The backyard will have both paved and turf play areas for the kids, as well as the parking and a vegetable garden. And Dave will be supervising the construction. He has done similar projects, including Ronald McDonald House, and two adaptive living facilities for people with disabilities. Next slide, please. And that's the aerial view. Next slide. This is a photo of the current condition, definitely missing shade trees and landscape that is suitable for the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Our architectural rendition, there will be a fence, could be split rail, shown picket fence here. That'll be up to city ultimately, what they prefer, but to really spruce up the neighborhood, especially on this critical corner. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And as you can see, the current landscape is pretty nonexistent from this aerial view. You can see also, there's 13 paved parking spaces existing in the backyard. We're bringing that down to nine. City code only requires seven, but we're going to extra just in case if there's visitors. And it's all behind a secure gated electronic gate and perimeter block wall. Next slide. And that's just a planned view of the landscape plan with sycamores and with Carolina cherries and other trees to screen, viz, and view from neighboring adjacent properties, as well as fruit trees along the alleyway. Next slide, please. I want to point out some factual inaccuracies in the November 10 appeal letter filed. Number one, no limit on the number of individuals. Well, there will be a limit, and that's set by building codes and fire codes. The appellant pointed out 22. It'll ultimately be determined by fire and safety, and the Casa Esperanza board is deliberated, and it's willing to live with a cap of 18 total persons residing at the facility. I'm sorry, I should say 19. 18 mothers and children, plus the resident assistant, who's there all the time, so total of 19. It is seven bedrooms. Number two, exempted themselves from being legally responsible for anything that happens in the neighborhood. That's just patently false. We never speak to that. There is a disclaimer or a waiver in the resident agreement in house rules that says when the women are on premises, that they're responsible for their kids in their own liability. But we never speak to off-premises.
You're at the halfway point, D'Sino.
Thank you, Mayor. And then lastly, unwilling to make any changes in their plans, and this really is the nub of the issue. It's the number of people. We asked what we could do, and as you heard the appellant say, they asked us if we would reduce from six women and their minor children, and we asked back, well, what are you thinking? And the answer was, can you limit total people to six to seven in the house, just like the rest of the houses in this neighborhood? And our program is unworkable with that small size. Next, please. Next slide. I want to point to the planning department's findings in their report. They found it to be compatible. It does complement the neighborhood. It aligns with the visual character of the neighborhood and enhances cosmetically aesthetically the whole neighborhood in landscaping. It doesn't reflect commercial uses, and it provides an additional affordable housing opportunity that doesn't include renting and buying necessarily. The house rules have been incorporated as conditions for approval into the CUP. We embrace that. We welcome that. We want to be held accountable. As we say, without rules, nothing works. And there's a myth out there that an R1 zoning plus a CUP means a zoning change. And I know Director Johnson has spoken to this in the Planning Commission hearing, but that's just not true. It will always remain R1 until there is a zoning change. But anybody who comes after us, if that should happen, would have to abide by the CUP verbatim, else get a new CUP. Else, it's R1. Next slide, please. So just to reiterate, we're recommending denial of the appeal, uphold the Planning Commission's unanimous November 5 approval of the project. We think it's the right project. It's the right location, and now is the time. I will cede the rest of the time to our chair, Julie Caesar, who will speak to some of the direct complaints that were in the agenda packet that you received.
Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself. You have five minutes left.
Thank you. My name's Julie Caesar, and I am the chair of Casa Esperanza. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time today. I just want to talk about some of the issues that the neighbors brought up. When they talk about the number of people in the house, I think it's important to note that when it was a foster home, and since it's been a foster home, there's been about 16 people living there. And really, there has been no complaints, and none of the neighbors even knew. They said they didn't even know it was a foster home. I think this is really because the home is situated on the corner lot, there's only one shared property line, and it really does provide for privacy for both the neighbors and the house. They talk about us not being closely aligned with Alexandria House, and there are quite a few differences, mostly with the size of the house. We have been down there. We have seen what they are doing, and we like their numbers and what they are doing. They do a lot more than just provide for the women in their house. They do a lot of different things for the homeless community, have a much larger budget. When you look at a budget, the Jesus, Mary, and Joseph home is much more similar in budget to what we are doing and more similar to how we would be. And we do have plenty of money in the bank to buy the home and to do all of the renovations. We are not going to open this house until we have two years' worth of our expense budget on hand, so we will be very fiscally conservative. And I think it's important to point out that the neighbors will be much better off with this house bought and renovated. You know, I don't think anything is going to happen to us, but if it did happen, they would be in a much better situation with this house purchased and brought up to all of the standards of today's. They did also speak about the building code, and the planning department did find that the garage conversions were done with a building code. Of course, we will be bringing everything up to standard, and, you know, the floor plan will not change very much, but the outside will look substantially different, and it still will be a home. I've gone off a script a little bit here. I don't want to duplicate any of the other things that were said. They talk about that we may not be essential or desirable, and that all these women would not come from Bakersfield. We were formed for the purpose of helping the homeless women and children of Bakersfield. Bakersfield is in our mission. It's in our mission. It's in our website. We definitely, we are not a partner of Alexandria House. We would never take women from Los Angeles overflow from them. We are here to serve the women of Bakersfield. No question about that whatsoever. So we're going to be doing that. As Jim spoke about, we're going to be meeting some of your goals that you have set, and yet we're going to do it with private money. So I think it's very important to note that I think it really does meet the city's needs. They talk about us operating as a business and not a home. This is very much going to be a home. This is a home for women to really change their lives. We will look like the other homes on the block, much better than the home looks today. We are not going to be doing things like onsite like Alexandria House does. Everything is going to be off. We are partnering with many organizations to make sure that we can use the services that are already in place. This is a win-win-win. It's a win for the neighbors to take a house that really needs a lot of improvement, and we will make those improvements. It's a win for the city because it will provide more transitional housing, and it's done with private funds. And it is a win for the women that will call this house their home. So we request that you grant us our CUP, and we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Caesar. We have about 20 seconds left. Is there anybody who wants to speak in opposition? I'm sorry, in support? Sing none? At this time, I'll ask for those who wish to rebut. You have five minutes if you wish to rebut in opposition. Mr. Hare?
As I said earlier, you know, this appears to be a back-of-the-napkin type of approach. And I think something occurred to me as Julie was talking was that the big difference is they're talking about the operation of the home, which we're concerned about, but we're talking about the business side of what's going to support that home. And there's virtually been little or no conversation about that whatsoever. It wasn't until we implied several times that we at least get a financial, a balance sheet, that we got a balance sheet. And that we're asking for budgets. We want to see how this home is going to operate, and is it going to be sustainable? And there's nothing that's been shown to us so far that shows that it is going to be sustainable. Julie and I had a great conversation, and I asked her to not take my comments as anger or criticism towards her, but, you know, constructive criticism. And one of the things that I brought up is I asked her if they'd gotten ahold of the navigation center on Brundage Avenue, and they haven't even been in touch with anybody from the navigation center yet. And to me, there's just all kinds of pieces of the puzzle that simply aren't in place. And having worked on 501(c)(3)'s myself, I know that usually there are budget plans, there's income statements, there's balance sheets, everything's out in the open, it's on the table for the people that are volunteering to support those organizations. And so for me, it should be there right now for this organization. And the fact that they've decided to find a property that they're going to have to get a conditional use permit on, and really tells me they're getting out over their skis. You know, find a property that's suitable for your first approach. Had they come to our neighborhood with a previous experience in doing those homes, my attitude would have been completely different, because then we'd have something that we could sink our teeth into and say, yeah, this is an organization that's got it together. They're going to make it work, and it'll work in our neighborhood. We welcome people to our neighborhood. We raised the money and helped develop that park across the street from us that has thousands of visitors a week. So we're not afraid of having strangers in our neighborhood. We're not worried about the aspect of what the home is going to be. We think their cause is noble. But we are concerned that there's not been enough background research and enough planning to make it go. The house was never listed on the market. We have no idea what the purchase price is. Every one of us that live in that neighborhood have friends and family that want to live in the neighborhood also, never had a chance to buy. I think the lawns are dead because they can't afford the water. If they had 16 kids in there as foster children, the water in that neighborhood is extremely expensive. And so it makes sense to me that the yard is dying. I always wondered why. Now I know. And I think there's a, you know, people want to give their neighbors the ability to be what they are in their homes. And so looking back on it, had I known that there were 16 people living in that house, foster children, I would have called code enforcement, because it's not appropriate for our neighborhood. And I kind of look back on myself, and I say that there's more that we could have done, probably as the house deteriorated to the state that it's in now. And there's somebody still living there. So we're not even sure what's going on with that part of it. But Casa Esperanza has a wonderful vision. They have a wonderful idea of how they want their home to work. They have an absolutely abysmal business plan of how it is going to work. And that's the reason that when we look at this and we say, you want to change our neighborhood, this is a change to our neighborhood. It is something different. Even though somebody else did something wrong there before that is similar, it doesn't make it right. And now that we know about it, and now that the conditional use permit has been applied for, we are going to stand up and make this neighborhood and keep it the great neighborhood that we know it is. And so unless there's a lot more substance or a lot more changes, where we understand how this thing is going to work and how our neighborhood is going to be protected, we're going to oppose this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hare. And now, is there anyone who wishes to rebut in support?
Jim Mosher in favor of Casa Esperanza. I want to just clear up a couple of myths that you've just heard perpetrated. As a secretary of the organization, I have never seen a formal communication, either by voice or email, fax, come in asking for financials from Casa Esperanza, except in the last couple of weeks, Ms. Caesar received one. So I don't know, maybe I'm not in the loop on that. The second thing is, this is not a back-of-the-napkin type project. This project has been under development for four years. We've been learning the best practices from other homes, including Alexandria House. But Alexandria House, let's face it, is different. It's two side-by-side homes. That's why it's so large. They have a pension for creating jobs in L.A. That's why the employees. It's in an R4 where these 100-plus-year-old craftsman homes used to be the R1, and it's been upzoned all around them with multifamily mid-rise and low-rise apartment complexes. They outreach to everyone in the neighborhood, and they have no complaints. They don't have security onsite. Parking, they don't have the parking onsite like the site at 1421 Panorama. So there are some distinguishing factors there. But the core of the mission, to empower homeless women to invent a new narrative for themselves and for their children, making that intergenerational change, that's what we're using, and we're using a lot of their documents, policies, and procedures. On their website, they state Alexandria House does 92% success rate in the women sustaining in permanent housing, and that's what we're about, is sustainability. It's all for naught if it's not sustainable over the long haul. And the same thing with finances. You heard Ms. Caesar say that our commitment is, we already have enough in the bank to purchase, to renovate, and to fund first-year OpEx, operating expenses, and our commitment is that while we're renovating, we're continuing to fundraise, and when we open doors, we'll have another year of OpEx in the bank. In addition to that, I head up the capital committee, and I'm having conversations with potential benefactors to establish a $4 million endowment. And our vision is to have that endowment fund approximately 50% of the annual operating expenses. It'll be a one-and-for-ever investment, but we think it is a very worthwhile investment. And that way, Casa Esperanza and the staff don't need to dedicate as many resources and as much time to fundraising and always chasing dollars. I do want to say that an abysmal business plan, to take Mr. Hare's words, that's not true. We have a written business plan. It's been around for two to three years. It hasn't been refreshed in maybe a few months, given COVID and everything, but that's on our agenda to refresh it, the budget's refreshed, all of that. Watering the lawn, the reason we're not in the house is we've been in escrow since May of last year. The current owner has not vacated the premises because we haven't closed. So we're waiting on the CUP, which is a condition of closing, to be able to enter and occupy the house and begin the renovations. I guess what I'll just close with is this. No location is ideal or perfect, but this location is as good as it comes to having a facility, I'm sorry, a home as opposed to a facility, that helps women and children integrate back into society, the job market, into schooling and education, into society at large, and particularly permanent housing. And with that, I will cede the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. We have about 55 seconds left. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in support?
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Colleen Peters, and I am also on the board of Casa Esperanza. I've heard Mr. Hare speak of his concerns with financials, but if perchance we went belly up, we're not going to be passing the pot, asking the neighbors to support our enterprise. We will have, number one, at least upgraded the neighborhood to better, to an equal or better than what it is. So I don't understand why the financials are such an issue, especially when it's not part of obtaining a CUP. And secondly, nothing ventured, nothing gained. Oh, my God. Why aren't we trying to make a difference? There is absolutely zero downside to this project. Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. So at this time, I will close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. There are times when I think the planning commission just hits home runs. And there are times when I think maybe just answering questions and making sure things fit into the proper box and are meeting the exact goals that need to be met in order to approve is just not enough. So Casa Esperanza, you know, I applaud what you're doing. I really do. I think your venture is noble. I think your aspirations are great. I, I really do. And I just lost my glasses. Okay. Could one of you, Mr. Mosher, Ms. Caesar, could one of you just come to the mic and tell us about your meetings with the neighborhood? Just your opinion of what went on and what happened and, and the flavor of that meeting?
Jim Mosher. Vice Mayor, the flavor of the meetings were cordial at the outset. And we give great accolades to Ms. Arquities, the appellant for her leadership in the neighborhood, bringing people together. But when it came to hearing concerns, it always led back to the number of people. If you would just reduce the number of people. And I have quotes here from several neighbors, I won't name them by name, but it was, there are plenty of mixed-use areas you can go. Go someplace else. We love your project, it's noble, we love what you're doing. It's just, don't do it here. Go someplace else. And to Ms. Arquities' credit, she was the one that actually gave the response, like six or seven people. But that's the only response we got. It was, make it look just, the number of people just like all the other residences, which I guess the normative number is probably six or seven. And we even talked about, what if a family, you know, parents with 10 or 11 children moved in? Well, that's a different story, because you wouldn't have all these problems. You know? Again, we beg to differ with that, with more adults there versus children. But there was nothing we could say or change that would be satisfactory. You know, so a lot of the concerns, safety of kids running out in Haley and Panorama, all that's mitigated and subsided. You don't hear that anymore. We don't even really hear about illegal garage conversions because they're not illegal. City planning and building found the permits. Dr. Rosak, I believe it was, owned the, previous owner that owned the house. So, the nature of the discussions would always come full circle of, there's all these fears of things that'll happen, but it came back to, if you just reduce the number of people, all those things will go away. Meanwhile, we heard, and Ms. Arquities, Mrs. Arquities in general, and in particular, said, we've got problems. We've got people urinating in the alley. Another neighbor said, we have people defecating in the alley. We've got things going on across the street in Panorama Park that are illegal. And we've got a problem with vagrancy. And that's in one of the written comments that was submitted in the packet, the agenda packet. And we're a commitment that we're going to make the neighborhood better. And more eyes and ears, you know, we're there 24/7. So, the neighborhood's changing, and I totally understand, 50, 60-year-old neighborhood, everyone wants the glory days. But the fact of the matter is, is everything's changing anywhere, everywhere. I have group homes in my subdivision, and I don't have a problem with that. Parking is a big deal, but as you see, it's, it's already, it's the ideal property. It already comes with 13, and we're, we're downsizing the parking a little bit because we don't need it.
Okay, I, I don't want to extend the pro or the con time, I just wanted to get a flavor of what those meetings were like, in your opinion.
Yeah, and I'll sum it up by saying, after the second meeting, the first one was June 12th, the second one was on July 6, 2020. It was mutually agreed, there really isn't any sense in having a third meeting unless we're willing to drastically reduce the number of people.
Okay, thank you. Would somebody from the neighborhood like to respond? Give us your flavor, your impression of those meetings and how they went?
I don't have anything too different than my impression of the meeting. It is something that I asked for. Andre Gonzalez was nice enough to put us in touch with Board members and facilitate that for us. And that really was our big concern. We had some suggestions for them as far as things that we've seen, and the alley is a number-one thing, it's just a kind of a community watch thing we wanted them to be aware of, because there are not very many neighborhoods in Bakersfield with an alley, and it has certain challenges. And we tried really hard, and it's hard because you wear so many different hats, from a mom hat to a teacher hat to a, you know, homeowner hat. We tried really hard to scale back our concerns and our questions to things that were neighbor concerns. Not just my personal belief about how they should run their program, that's not my business. And so, we really tried to hone in on what is our number-one thing, and that was the number of people. I don't have any control over who buys the house next to me, just like the home on the very other side of me sold this past summer. I didn't have any say in who moved in. But they're wonderful neighbors, and, and that's fine. And they have a multi-generational home with grandparents and things, and that's fine. I don't have an issue with that. I do have an issue with 22 people in one single home that has one family room, one common area kitchen. And so, when we kind of realized that things weren't really flexible in that, it didn't really make sense to keep asking or expressing our concerns.
Okay, thank you. So, part of what I've been doing is not loitering or, or trying to be vagrant in that area, but I've been around that neighborhood lately. And I've seen what the neighbors there are trying to do. And they're improving their houses, they're making changes to their houses, they're, they're making them better. And that is a great sign for that, that community. They're banding together. So, I have a couple of questions here. Is my understanding, you went to 98 neighbors, knocked on the door, and you had 13 that supported the project?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that means you talked to almost 100 people and 14% of those people would support your project?
We talked, we knocked on 98 doors, I'm sorry, do I need to come up? Ken, you can hear me. We knocked on 98 doors, we talked to 24 people, and we got 13 letters of support.
Okay, thank you. One of the comments that I believe Mr. Mosher made is, it's all about communications. And if you, if you are moving into an area and you know the neighborhood is going to be upset by that, why, why would you allow the communications to stop? I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of your job to reach out to that community. It's just kind of, it's, you don't need to answer that. Could one of you tell me what is two years of operating expenses? That number?
Five, 500,000. Our operating expense is about 250 a year.
About 250 a year, and that is, okay, maybe you could come up to the microphone. So, including staff and payroll and taxes and whatever else, it's 20,000 a month?
Yes.
With how many staff?
Three staff. We, we plan on having a program manager, and then a resident assistant, and a clerical helping person.
Okay, so what do you figure your payroll is a month? I'm, I'm just asking these questions.
About 150, including benefits. A year, sorry, 150,000 a year.
Okay. All right, thank you. You know, I did ask, I think both times I talked to you, about a business plan, because I was interested in what that looked like. And you said, well, you know, it's kind of dated and it wouldn't, but still, I, I never was offered a, a chance to glance at that. So, I don't know, we don't need to talk about it anymore, but that, that really bothers If the CPU was approved and, and you weren't successful, it doesn't mean that CUP is going away. And somebody else, it would be so restrictive that nobody else could really move into that Which means that property is just going to sit there. It just, it means the property is just going to sit there. And, I, I know, but I just, I just want to speak to the audience right now. Thank you. And that's a problem for me, because that CUP is, I don't think is in the spirit of what that neighborhood's been doing. Improving themselves and moving forward and making that community as good as they can make it. So, I spent about three hours last night at my house, going through the terms and the conditions and the goals, and I came up with quite a few additional conditions that would have to be implemented, implemented in order for me to be satisfied with what's going on. And then I sat back and I looked at it and I said, you know, if they agreed to these conditions, they would fail, because there were, there was no room for anything else. And when I talked to you over the, over the Zoom meetings, I, every time I walked away with this feeling that this has not been proposed and, and has not been, it's not been something that's concrete. It's not something I can put my teeth in, I can't. Every time I've talked, I walked away from those, I felt this has not been planned well. And I don't want to invade somebody's neighborhood with something that I have little confidence in succeeding. I admire what you're doing. I wish you the best of luck. But my gut feeling is, this shouldn't happen. And I, I understand what you're going through, and I understand there's other properties and there's other things, but I don't think this is an amenity that this neighborhood needs nor wants. I think that house will sell, and eventually somebody will come in there and, and doll it up like the rest of the neighbors are doing in that area. I understand that gets right there, but other than get and transportation, there's nothing else even close to that house. So, after I did all that work last night, I, it just dawned on me that this is just not going to work. I, I couldn't, I couldn't submit all my changes to you and, and still believe that you had a chance to make it successful. And so, tonight, my motion is to approve the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Colleagues, any requests to speak?
There you go. I'm brand-new, and this was a tough one for me to come out of the gate with. Let me tell you, this was a tough one. Let me take this off. I've spent myself probably five hours on this, in my office, in my home, on Monday and Tuesday, digging in to this whole thing, because my heart does cry out for women and children. If you look at my bio, my whole desire when I was a young person was just to be a mom. So, I have a heart for moms and children. But in reviewing what I was reviewing, and then having a wonderful meeting with Julie and Dave in my office yesterday, and I really appreciate them coming and spending time with me, we talked about some things, I gave them some suggestions, and I just felt myself that, number one, the home was going to be inadequately staffed for the kind of challenges that were going to come forth. There's going to be a lot. You put six different families from six different, maybe cultural backgrounds, or, or all the, all the emotional trauma that they've been through and so forth. I just feel that it, the home is going to be inadequately staffed, which becomes a health, health and safety issue, which is going to spill over to the neighborhood. And I, I agree with Councilmember Weir, that we've got other people in that neighborhood who have invested dearly in their homes, and that's where they want to stay. I think the, the heart of your program is wonderful, I'm, I'm appealed to it. But when I saw your budget, and we talked about what you all were thinking about as far as paying the people that were going to be there, I told you yesterday, I felt like that was going to be inadequate, that you're going to have to pay a lot more to get people that are trained to do that work. So, I feel like your plan is logistically and financially weak, and that you're inadequately staffed. I don't want to squash your dream, because there's still tomorrow, so it's not like, okay, just give up on what you all have been working on for four years. No, don't give up on it. Bakersfield can use this, but I think only starting out with 600 and some thousand dollars when more than half of that, two-thirds of that, is being put into the home, it leaves you very little to even be able to open the home. Which means if you're going to have to raise another 300, 400, 500,000, that home could be sitting there empty for a while, in, in my opinion. So, of course, this is just my opinion. So, I, my suggestion is to get that endowment going to where you've got more money in the bank, and then you can move forward, because there's a really wise thing, it says, don't start building a house unless you know you can pay for it. We know where that came from, didn't come from a bank. And so, think about that, to where, how you can get that endowment built up, and then I think the opportunity will come, but I'm going to have to agree with Ken on this, I'm sorry. This is a hard one. Didn't think it'd be this hard coming out of the gate. All right.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Freeman, please. Well, okay. Does anybody else wish to speak on the council? I don't see any requests to speak, so you have a motion, and we'll take a roll call vote now. Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Arias?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez abstaining. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Parlier.
Aye.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Counsel and mayor statements.
Colleagues, are there any requests to speak? Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. The next few months, our business licenses are going to be going out in the mail to our local businesses. And we all know that multitudes of businesses are suffering within our community, specifically our restaurants, our industries, and others. I would like staff to look at opportunities to potentially bridge that with COVID monies or other funds to alleviate that extra burden that's going to be placing on businesses that really haven't made any money over the last year. Staff has done a wonderful job with B-Cares and other COVID funds to be able to help our local business community. So I'm asking you to pull another rabbit out of your hat, come back to us and see what you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last few weeks, several downtown stakeholders have asked about the Mills Act. And I know the city has done some work in the past. And so I'm not making a referral that we move in that direction, but just simply if staff can provide the council a historical analysis of the Mills Act and the work the city and the council have done in the past, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Colleagues, anyone else? I don't see any other requests to speak. Typically, tomorrow, we would be gathering for the 41st Annual Prayer Breakfast, which is the largest in the nation outside of the National Prayer Breakfast. I've been asked to extend an invitation to the public. Of course, we will not be able to gather as we typically have at the convention center. But tomorrow at 7:28, if you want to tune into KGT or bakersfieldprayerbreakfast.com, I'll be giving a message, offering a prayer, and then inviting the public to pray. So the organizers have asked me to extend that invitation. All of us praying together, tune in at 7:28, bakersfieldprayerbreakfast.com. I know many of you have participated in that activity before. So thank you very much. Thank you to all of you tonight for your participation. And seeing no other requests to speak, we're adjourned at 7:33.